Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. I am John John the Wise. This is the Night City Council and I have with me two illustrious guests. You know them, you love them. First, it is my co-host, the mayor of Balanced Town himself, James Hutt. Hello, James.
Hello.
And we have another special guest with us, brand ambassador and writer and co-creator and all kinds of things, all put into one. Jay Gray, how are you?
I am doing okay. So fun fact, James has to be James because there's so many Js in our company that he can't be anything else.
Yeah, I heard, I've, I've heard that and then I realized my name is John John and I have two Js, so I'm like just throwing it in the mix with you guys.
They ever call you JJ as a kid?
Some, yeah, people have called me JJ. People have called me JJ for sure.
So you're almost, you were almost a J if you kept going on that, it would get shorter and shorter and shorter until you were just a J.
I know, I was almost there, but then I just extended it. I went John John, I added more words at the end. So yeah, I'm there now. But I'm, I really appreciate you guys coming on. James, I miss you. I hope you're doing well.
Oh, I'm doing great. Don't worry about me.
It's usually, we do this show like in the middle of the month. So it feels like, it feels like it's been two months since I talked to you. So it's fun, but we got a bunch of questions from the community, but this show is a very special show and the reason we have Jay Gray with us here today is because that's how special it is. We're gonna be talking about, that's right, Jay. That's right. That's how special.
Yes.
We're gonna be talking about the data pack that's coming out. The, for, right now that we are talking about it, it is unreleased. We're gonna be talking about what is inside of it. I've taken a look. I love it. I love its contents and I can't wait to talk about it. So thank you, Jay, for joining us and to, to do this.
Yep. I'm, I'm here to make sure that James doesn't say anything and cause if he does, that's it. I hit the little switch. The bomb goes off in his head.
It's a good thing we pre-record so I can edit all of those things out. Honestly though, when-
Pretty sure cranial explosions do violate the trauma services.
We haven't edited anything out other than James looking through pages of a book to find something. That's the only thing we've ever edited out really that I can think of.
Get the new reprinting, James. Those pages flip faster.
I skipped the flip.
Slicker. Oh, that's right.
I'm not gonna rush you when you're doing that, you know, but so I'm like, I'll just edit it. He's just sitting there. We're sitting in silence. He's flipping through.
Right, right. There's a lot of, um, I think it's on this page.
Yes, so for future reference, don't stress, dude. Flip through those pages with ease. I'm here for you, okay?
Yep. That, that is by the way, the, a, a dirty secret of game design is that none of us actually have any of our rules memorized.
Oh, yeah.
We always have to look things up. It's like, I'm writing an adventure. Oh, wow. I forgot, I forgot what radiation damage is. I better go reread that section.
Yeah, how, I don't know how you can remember. It's insane.
I got a pretty good grasp on it.
It's my favorite game. I love it. I read it all the time and I learn new things about it every day.
I'm, I'm just trying to answer questions with the rules text.
Yeah.
A lot of these questions are people asking for direct rules clarifications and I don't wanna go off of, and I think it uses also instead of a must, you know?
Yeah. As we learned to our sorrow, the addition of the word still to one rule caused confusion for months.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense.
I, I meant that as a word to clarify the rule. It turned out to create more confusion.
The, in, in Warhammer right now, they have this thing about fighting first or fighting last in their new edition. And it's like argument central for like, because one will have a special ability that fights first and then the other one's like, if it does fight first, then you fight last, then you, so everyone's just sitting there with like four different books trying to figure out who's fighting when.
It's all fun and games until somebody brings up the stack.
The stack of books.
No, the stack in magic.
Oh, oh, what's that? I'm not familiar.
Order in which things resolve.
Oh, that's right.
I played, I played a lot of Sentinels of the Multiverse, which is a great deck builder game from, from Greater Than Games. And it's, it's the same kind of thing where the combinations of if I do this, these both happen at the same time, but does one take priority over the other? And you have to look it up and see if they've released an official ruling on it or not.
Yep, an FAQ or an errata or something like that. Yeah, you, you can't get it perfect. It's impossible because you'll have like one intention and then it's just like you're relying on language to get that intention out.
Yeah, the greatest piece of advice I can ever give any GM is if it's taking you more than a minute to find a ruling, make something up. Say you're making it up. Go back to it, figure it out later so you get it right the next time.
Wave the hand. Wave the hand. Let's play.
A hand, the hand can say plus two on one side and minus two on the other side.
Exactly. You tell me when to stop.
Pick one.
All right, so before the community hates us, let's get to the questions. All right, ladies and gentlemen. First question for Jay and James, how bad would it be to inflict critical injuries outside of combat because of a failed check? Or making a weapon deal a critical injury on a five or six? This is from username Exotic.
This is a great question. This is, I love this question. First off, so on a D6, there are six outcomes. If you have, you're essentially doubling the amount of crits. What you need to think about is you're doubling the prevalence of crits if you go to five and six instead of just six. I would say that if you wanna do crits on, um, critical injuries on five and six, you just have to understand that you're doubling the amount of critical injuries in your game.
In fact, you're more than doubling because in theory you, you would be, there'd be any combination of five and six.
Oh, I thought it was double fives or double sixes.
Exactly.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a combination of-
Any combination of fives and sixes.
That's at least quadrupling.
I don't wanna run the calc right now.
From one, you went from one outcome to now four, five. Yeah, yeah.
Five, five, six, six, five, six, five, six.
Exactly. Yeah.
Anyway.
But what about a-
So I'm saying that doesn't seem big, but that's big. That's a big change. And if you're doing that, I mean, your game is gonna feel really different and if that's your goal, let me, let me give you a secret. Why stop there?
Ooh, here we go.
If you get a double on any number, you get a critical injury.
Oh.
Why stop there? Uh, cause we're already in home, happy homebrew land. You know, if you wanna kick it up a notch into something that I have not playtested, if you really like critical injuries, maybe you'd like that. I don't know. Test it out.
Yeah.
I would certainly love to hear how that rule affects a gameplay.
The thing about, in my experience with-
Exotic, tell me how it went.
My experience with critical injuries has always been as whichever side gets the first critical injury, they're immediately snowball losing the fight. Like everybody has to pick up that weight. That, that combatant is pretty much disabled. Uh, not entirely, but mostly disabled because of the critical injury. So it's a really important mechanic to make sure you don't just throw around willy-nilly.
Yeah, it, it would be interesting to try that on a low damage weapon. So the weapon becomes less about, it, it becomes the, this is the weapon for inflicting critical injuries, not the weapon for doing damage, like a 2D6 or a 3D6 weapon. And it's just like this, you know, this weapon that is okay, but if it hits just right, it's super nasty, like the, the equivalent of, of, you know, the, the guy punching Batman fighting Superman. If Superman, Batman could do the vibrating cheetah thing just right and hit Superman just right, he could do massive internal damage.
Okay, and the other thing is that critical injuries outside of combat because of failed check, I think that's a cool idea. That's the type of thing that you gotta prepare that before the game. I would caution against like using that as a backpocket DM tool to throw out, um, to spice things up. Um, because you run the risk of making it feel really unfair on the table. Um, and that seems like hurt feeling central. I just, you know.
Yeah. Dismembering a character's arm like just like out of the blue is pretty messed up.
Yeah. If you, if you look at certain things in the rulebook and in, in some of the DLCs we released, like, uh, weather, Night City weather, there are situations outside of combat where you inflict very specific critical injuries if certain things happen, like you get whiplash in a car crash. Um, the, uh, sandstorms can inflict the foreign object because you get sand in your lungs, um, kinda thing. So the idea that a specific failure can lead to a specific critical injury, like the falling off a roof can break legs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Just saying, oh, well, uh, you messed up on this lockpicking roll. So the door shuts, slams down on you and you, let's roll on the table.
I'm not sure that's what exotic meant, but I get what you mean. Um, they're really painful. Critical injuries are really painful. So whenever you're dealing them out, it should be a moment of high drama. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, outside of combat, uh, the, if that would be warranted is questionable to me. Anyway.
Yeah.
This is, this question is not, was not about rules. It was about how do you feel about this? So I feel pretty, pretty good about that answer. Of course, you know, it's best for your table in the GM.
Yeah, for sure. I think it's good to hear from the people that designed the game, you know, cause you, it, it's a thing that this person is theory crafting, you know, it's like a thought experiment. And from people that designed the game to give their insight on how good or bad that would be, I think that's what exotic was looking for. So that's what we got from you guys.
You ever, you ever played a game Gorm?
Gorm? Is it an M at the end?
It's a, it's a VR game where you can like rip apart an arena.
I've seen videos.
That, uh, increasing the crits kinda reminds me of that type of thing. If you wanna like run something very pulpy and violent, like a Tarantino style thing.
Yeah. Okay.
If you were, if you were looking for a more deadly cyberpunk, increasing the crit rate would be a much more interesting to me idea than just simply raising damage values.
Yes. That's the other thing is I, I think it's a cool question, um, because it would be inherently more interesting to me than increasing all the damage to weapons by D6.
Yeah. I like that. I like that. Uh, all right. Next question, can other roles repair, install, or make items the same way that a tech can? This is from Twiggy.
Um, repair? Hi Twiggy. Um, repair, yes. Anybody can repair. Um, they can't repair like tech can. They can't do jury rig. Um, that's the one special way a tech can repair. Um, and they get bonuses repairing otherwise. But any of the tech specialties can do a repair. Um, install, uh.
I don't even think, is there even a check for installing a weapon mod, for example?
Uh, I usually do weapons tech.
There's not technically a check for installing a weapon mod. I don't think. Um, cause a lot of it is like putting a scope on. That's pretty hard to screw up.
Yeah, I make it a low DV weapons tech role to put it, to do something like that. But if it's like, you know, boring the cylinder or doing some other advanced stuff, then maybe a little bit more difficult.
That's an upgrade. Yeah, right? So that's a tech thing. Upgrades a tech thing. Uh, making things, that's a tech thing.
Yeah. I, I would say with possibly one exception, if it's like IKEA furniture.
That's, that's not making anything.
That, so it's not making something. If you are, that's assembling. You-
That's assembling. There's the difference.
Yeah, if, if a tech, if you were to get a car and all the parts there, instructions there, in theory, someone may could assemble that. But if you wanted to make it from scratch, you need the tech. That's their special ability.
That makes sense. Yeah, I like that idea.
So, uh, yeah. Installing, installing cyberware, for example, that's surgery. Um, and technically, um, you can make drugs as a med tech. Uh, I think that's the only crosswires on that one. Other than that, maker is an ability that's for the tech.
Pharmaceuticals, not street drugs.
Pharmaceuticals, pharmaceuticals. It's called medical tech, pharmaceuticals.
Right.
In parentheses.
All right. Sounds good. Uh, Twiggy has one more for us. Actually, he has two more for us. I just, first come, first served, ladies and gentlemen. You throw me your questions, I throw it on the list. Uh, Twiggy asks, can weapons be upgraded more than once?
Um, I'm-
Uh, so there are two things here. One, they can have more than one mod as long as that mod does not take up more slots than are available.
Yeah.
But up, upgrade is a different thing, right?
Upgrade the, the tech ability, um, I believe says that the items can only be upgraded once.
It can only benefit from a tech upgrade once. Now, here's the thing. If you're making attachments as a tech, that's not technically an upgrade anymore. That's an attachment. Right?
Oh, that's clever. That's a clever way around it.
Um, yeah, it's for people to get more and more granular into stuff.
So, so for example, if you made, uh, let me get to the right page.
But it's balanced out, it's balanced out by the attachment slots not being on exotic weapons. That's the key. So you can tech upgrade an exotic weapon.
Yeah. So if, let's see, um, let's see, if you've got a increased number of slots of an item, of a type of item already has options, attachments for. Now, so simplify item, okay. Simplify the item having the time it takes to make any future role repair to the item. If you were to install a self, invent a self-repair module, which you then installed as a mod into your gun, that is no longer, that is not an upgrade under the upgrade expertise because it's a attachment instead.
I mean, if that was a, so here's the thing. Um, that's not like anything else we have in the book, so that would go through the GM. And if they say, hey, that's an attachment, then hey, that's an attachment. At that point, my hands are, the GM said it was okay. What are you talking to me for?
Yeah.
So in theory, in theory, they now have this attachment that does what an upgrade would do and the gun still can be upgraded one time.
Yeah, but I don't know what I do at my table. Uh, attachments should feel like attachments.
As an example.
Feel like upgrades. They feel different. These are different things.
This is the man that invented Daddy Shark, right? So, and I'm gonna make a video about Daddy Shark. That's, that's coming up soon.
He's always there.
Uh, all right, let's move on to the next one. And last one from Twiggy, how much for a nomad upgrade if you're not a nomad?
Uh, that is listed in the book, correct?
It is in, it is in the section under, um, in the getting it done section under the nomad's moto special ability. And I do believe it is a thousand eb for a rank one attachment. Um, let's see, um, unless I stated it, blah, blah, blah. Okay, here you.
I'll state it otherwise, I found it. I'll state it otherwise, an option can only be taken once per vehicle. These upgrades are rarely sold on the open market, very expensive for those attainable at motor rank one and at luxury for those not attainable at motor rank one.
Yes.
Ah, okay. So there's a premium if you don't have the nomad rank.
Yes.
Yeah.
Top of page 160.
There you go.
Very expensive is, um.
A thousand.
A thousand, thank you. And luxury is five thousand. So basically, since I think they're all like, what, one or five, it's basically multiply the, no, it's one, seven. Actually, you could, that's a, that's a bargain for putting an AV, AV4 engine on your car, cause that's a, that's a rank seven.
Yeah.
And you're getting it for five thousand.
Yeah.
That's something to think about, even if you're a nomad.
Yeah.
For the future.
Now, yeah, yeah. Now, um, I will admit that going back to layout, I wish I had put that information on the parts and services table. So maybe I'll think about that for fourth printing. But hopefully we're a little ways from getting, having to go to a fourth printing. I love selling out of books, but I love not having books to sell.
Yeah, that's, I understand that completely.
That's a big mood.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
The PDF is nice though. The PDF is real good.
Oh, heck yeah. The PDF is nice.
This, this was absolutely designed, uh, with digital in mind from the very beginning, uh, when, when, when Mike and I sat down and worked out the layout.
Yeah, it was genius. I loved it.
He taught me things about accessibility in PDFs. I didn't even know.
Yes. No, the, people ask me why the map looks so weird and that's specifically the, the map of Night City with all the colors. The colors are specifically picked, so none of the colors would be next to a color that common forms of color blindness would not be able to distinguish between.
Oh, that's why it has a distinguished look. It has like this specific look to it and I don't know how to put my finger on it. That's what it is.
Yeah, basically I ran it through a whole bunch of, uh, there's a whole bunch of different, um, accessibility apps you can get to work on that. And there's many different forms of color blindness, but, and we can't account for them all, but they come down to a certain levels, uh, certain kinds. And we tried to make it that was easy to determine, uh, that, you know, we didn't put like, for people of red, green, we didn't put red and green so much next to each other and things like that.
Yeah.
Uh, that was very important. There's all, there's all kinds of things going into that. There's all kinds of secrets going to layout that no one will appreciate, but hopefully the people that need to appreciate it.
Yeah, it's interesting. Just from the stuff that you've told me over, you know, our time knowing each other, it's stuff that I would have never even thought about. And now I look for it when I look at ads or the way things are printed and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're, we're learning all the time. Um, it, it is all kinds of little things. Uh, uh, even just putting the artist's names on the art. Though that, I'll be honest, that's for me because I always wanna credit the artist. I always wanna credit the artists when we're doing things and, um, with Witcher, I can't as easily because I never know who did what.
Ah.
Cause their names aren't on the art.
Shout out to Jay Kovach.
Yes, Jay does amazing work. Uh, she is our art director and she is, she is a force. She works for us. She does art direction for Chaosium as well. And she is a force. Uh, she is able to, uh, get the artists to give their best work by working with them and bridging the incredibly messy minds where we say, oh, here's 30 pages of information and reference pictures. And somehow get that to the artist and get them to make a cohesive whole out of it.
And by the way, for those of you listening, all those artists are on Instagram. They're on Art Station. They do wonderful work. I follow them. They're wonderful people. I talk to them, you know, here and there, looking at their beautiful artwork. So if you want more of that stuff, you can find them and support them online for sure.
Please, please do.
Yeah. Okay, let's go. Next question. Tricky Taco asks, when to use persuasion versus acting when you're lying to somebody?
Um, so acting is a very specific skill. It does very specific things. Um, the full text on it is 137, top of page. It's the skill of assuming a role, disguising yourself to someone else, whether real or fictitious, or faking emotions and moods. It's not the skill about directly lying to people or convincing them to do something that you want. Convincing someone to do something that you want through like, hey, you should do this because of this. That's persuasion.
Um, as, as an example, if I were pretending to be John John the Wise, famous, famous media personality.
Famous.
Uh, after growing, you know, putting on my fake beard, shaving my head, I would, uh, I would be using acting to convince them I was John John. But if as John John, I wanted to convince them to say incriminating things on my podcast, that would be persuasion.
And there's a good chance that they would be complementary skills as you now looked like John John.
Yes.
Though your words, although actually-
Disguise.
I wonder how, if it's on a podcast, all the work you did.
Yes, well, you know, but I, but I'm, I'm, I'm hopefully, I'm hopefully face to face because we're, the one thing, the one thing the dark future doesn't have is COVID.
That's true. That's true. It's not there. People are walking around, no mask. They're wearing a mask for fun or, you know.
You know, to keep, to keep out sandstorms and inversion smokes.
Yeah, I mean, if you're living in LA, you've been wearing a mask in the cyberpunk world.
You know, it's like, it's like, it's like, yeah, this is, everyone's complaining about masks. Nope, everybody, our future's wearing those. It's like, you know, like carrying an umbrella.
Yeah, exactly. Kids take it to school.
All right, yeah, they're not complaining about masks. They're complaining about air quality.
Yeah.
Yeah, in my, in my experience in my games, like if the players put on a, a role, so like, let's say they wanna dress like the janitor and sneak into a, a structure. Then when they go in, they gotta act like a janitor. So that's when they would use acting. People would be like, you know, you, you try to convince them that you work there with your acting, but then if they ask you a direct question, maybe asking you for your credentials or something like that, that's when you persuade them to leave you alone.
It's a-
Or, that's a good option. You use your incredible knowledge of corporate procedures through bureaucracy.
Bureaucracy, yeah.
To, to, to show them about how you've lost your badge and you've filled out these specific forms to get your badge back. But until then, uh, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, yeah.
The printer was broken. They couldn't give me a temporary badge. Sorry.
They'll know. They'll be like, oh, those forms are the worst because they've been there with, with the badge situation.
Yep.
Got it.
Bureaucracy is an underrated skill that can be used to great effect.
Yeah, that's great. I love that. Well, Tricky, I hope you liked that. Thank you for all you do for the community as well. I really appreciate you. He's one of the mods in our server. Uh, next, tactics, skill elaboration and other support skills. This is from Iron Serpent Prince. Uh, well, maybe if we go, they left a page number at least, you know what I mean?
Well, I can, I can, I can give you sort of an idea. Basically, there's a lot of people who are confused about how to use certain education skills uh, within like tactics or local expert or science. Basically, they say, oh, well, how do I use them? Deduction.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, because we don't have specific rules that say, oh, you can make a tactics check to give everyone in your group a plus one at the beginning of battle by analyzing the scene. They get confused as to why tactics is a thing. And, you know, it comes, this is, all comes down to we give GMs freedom.
Yes.
Sometimes they're not sure what to do with it.
Yeah. I've, I've noticed that and that's exactly how I've used tactics. In my home, one of my home games, I have a, a corporate who, he's like, I wanna play a guy that doesn't fight and his bodyguard does all the fighting. So instead he has this kind of like battlefield support role of like observing the battlefield, see what's going on, giving them tips, and then that's his tactics role. And, and he gives like modifiers plus ones all around.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that, I mean, that's a, that, that is, using tactics as a buff skill, that's great. Using, um, deduction as a buff skill, also good.
Mm-hmm. A lot of these skills work really well as a complementary skill. Um, and, uh, you know, science is, uh, is useful when directly doing science. Um, it's also great for how can my knowledge of science help me in this other skill? Um, I would say that, uh, there are a lot of skills here that are more, that have a lot more story power than other skills. Um, meaning like I can find a way to bring this up because this is my character and this is how I might go about this problem. I might go about it with what I know from this part of science. Anyway, uh, I, I would say that, uh, that's, it's a very big question. I don't think I can get to every skill and give a reason to use it off the top of my head.
Yep. I, I will say, um, probably the most powerful skill on that page. Yeah, and it's, it's, it's called library search. You know, it's, that's a legacy name. It's always been called library search. Today we will call it Googling.
Library search is a very good skill.
Very good.
It is simply the act of accessing the data pool or any other information resource, whatever that information resource is, whether it is an actual library or a digital library. And anything other than a person and saying, hey, unless you're like literally being able to go through their memories somehow.
It's, it's not for police records. That's criminology. It's for everything else.
Yep. Um, it is very useful. Um, and it is one of your primary methods of doing investigation research, which, um, if you need building blueprints for your highest objective, or you need to know, uh, the, you need to know, you know, what person is, uh, the, the name of the, of a person uh, that works in a building. That's a good, library search is a great skill for that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I've always used it as some kind of digital way where you're going through a database. Whatever information that database has, however you access it, you're using digital ways. I haven't really thought about like the analog way of actually searching a library. That just came to my mind now.
Yeah.
There's that too.
If you get it, manage to get into the university library, they still have paper books.
Yeah, there you go. Do an actual search of the library. I like it. All right, let's do one more and then we'll get to the data pack. Uh, this is another one from Iron Serpent Prince, uh, asking about awarding IP. Do you do it individually or all equally? Rules as written, page 410. That's what they're asking.
Uh, so I, I'm just trying to clarify and make sure. Um, so there are two types of IP. And which, uh, James, James and Mike very cleverly wrote this system. Uh, there is the group IP and the play style IP. I think the rules as written state that if no major mission goal was accomplished, you award individual IP. If a major mission goal was accomplished, you award mission IP.
Yes.
I was doing it wrong.
Yeah, not both. You're not supposed to do one from column A and one from column B at the same time. So you know, your game, your rules.
If the players didn't finish the mission, uh, they're awarded IP based on either their primary or secondary play style, unless they did something the GM considers standout from one of the other play styles that would award them more points. Unless they did something the GM considers standout from one of the other play styles that would award them more points. They do complete the mission, you award them based on the group column.
So basically, uh, if they haven't finished the mission, which means it's still ongoing, that means we just had.
The session.
Yeah.
Then it's individual.
Let's say we finish a session and we didn't finish the mission, we're still in the Arisaka Tower, maybe in the next two sessions we'll finish it. Uh, do we do individual IP until we finish? Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Yep. So if you're a warrior socializer, you get either your warrior or socializer column of IP based on whichever one was higher.
Hmm.
Yep.
Unless you did something stand out from the other two columns and then the GM can award you that.
Yeah. And, and it does mean that in theory, people, characters can advance uh, at different rates depending on, you know, if someone get this, someone's getting, gets a lot of high rewards and someone gets a lot of low awards. And you know, that's just part of cyberpunk.
That's interesting. I'm gonna experiment with that because I've been doing it a little bit different. I even made a video about how I do it. If you guys are uh, want to check it out, it's in one of my past videos. And uh, I've been having fun with it, like all, when the season is over and we finish the big campaign arc, I'll just blast them with like two hundred IP. Just to make it feel like something big happened at the end of the, of the season, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and if you don't wanna, if you don't wanna go about the whole like, oh, he's a warrior, socializer um, thing, you can just award group IP at the end of every session. Um, whereas it's not about succeeding in the mission, it's about today, comma, toward completing the mission and then the sentence.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
By the way, John John will include a link to that, to that video he just described in the, in the description of the video.
Yeah.
Like a good YouTuber would.
I'll try to remember to do that. I'm so bad at doing that stuff. I say, check out my video and then I don't put it up like anywhere on the top.
Yeah, this, this, this is the point of the video where the little box should pop up at the top with a link to it.
I need a guy that does the boxes for me. That's what I need. I'm in that zone right? Alright, let's uh, let's get to the data pack. I think everybody is waiting with bated breath for us to talk about some unreleased content. First off, I would like to say thank you so much for including me in this, guys. I'm honored, as I've always been honored with everything you guys have done. Uh, with me. So let's get to it. I have it open here and post-production, I'm gonna put all this stuff on the screen. So as we go through it, we can talk about it. Uh, if we want to leave some things out, we can leave some things out. But um, Jay and James, whichever one of you wants to get up front, let us know, what is the data pack all about?
Okay, so the Cyberpunk Red Data Pack is a collection of resources primarily for the game master, but also useful for the players. Um, which uh, all comes together. It is not a single book product, but instead it will come in a cardboard sleeve. And or a zip file, depending on whether you're getting the digital or the physical version, uh, that includes a booklet with six new scream sheet adventures. And six uh, random encounter tables, uh, if you would. Uh, they're, they're, but they're much more than just encounters. Uh, we'll get to that when we talk about the booklet. It includes twelve maps. Uh, each of the maps are eleven by seventeen. Uh, every map has one mate within the set, so you can make a larger twenty-two by seventeen map out of them, putting them together. Uh, it comes with a pad of, uh, it comes with one character sheet and black, in, in red and white, yeah, white and black and white. Uh, if you have the digital version or a pad of fifty red and white character sheets. Uh, if you have the physical version, double sided, we condensed them all, the, the, the three page sheet into a single page, two, uh, doubles, uh, single double sided page sheet. Uh, for this and just one second, I think I got them all.
I think you did.
Yes, I did. That's, those are the three things that are in there. The, the, there have been discussions as whether we wanted to put other things at the time, but we decided that it get, if it gets too chunky, the price point rises. And uh, we want to get to a point where we want to say, oh, let's make this as opposed to, let's take more things add to this.
Yeah.
Um, it's going to retail for twenty dollars physical. I don't know what the digital retail will be yet, um, with uh, digital stuff that has a strong physical component. Uh, we usually don't follow the half it rule. We usually go a little lower.
Yeah.
Uh, and I want to tell you when it's going to be out. The truth is, I kinda hoped it would be out very soon, but the realities of the world is that uh, getting things out, especially things with multiple parts like this. Is a lot harder than it was two years ago.
Yeah.
And I can say it's harder than it was a year ago, but it's definitely harder than it was two years ago. Uh, and so we are hoping to see it um, sometime in September or October by this point.
Well, I'm optimistic about its release date because it looks finished, so.
Oh yeah, it's absolutely finished. It's at the printer. It's, it's just, it's just a question of them getting all the different parts because it's got the cardboard outside, the map paper, the booklet paper. And then the uh, character sheet paper and uh, cardboard backing for that and the glue and uh, and it's a lot harder to get all those these days than it was.
Uh, and my question for you, will this be part of the bits and mortar program as well?
Yes, uh, currently our plan is that all new products uh, in both the Witcher and the Cyberpunk line will be parts of bits and mortar going forward.
Okay, and for those of you guys that are not familiar with, with, with what that is, your FLGS just has to go and sign up to the bits and mortar program, Google it, you'll find the website. And it's really easy. My guy did it. He just sent an email. They signed him up. And there's a bunch of companies like Artel, Sorian, Chaosium does stuff too, where if you buy the physical product. Then the owner of the FLGS can give you a digital code to, or I think he actually emailed it to me. But somehow he gets you the digital version of the product that you bought. So.
It's, it's, it's up to them. They can email it to you. They can give you a code like written on the receipt. They can, they could download it and put it on a flash drive for you.
It's the most win-win situation I've ever seen in the industry. Like, everybody wins. The FLGS gets support, you get a physical, you get two copies of the thing, one digitally. And for the Cyberpunk Core Rulebook, that was amazing because we just talked about how awesome the PDF was. So it was good to have all that.
Yep, and I wanna emphasize that while we have a retail store online where we sell our products, we do not participate in bits and mortar. As a retailer, we encourage you to go to your local comic shop, uh, comic and game shop or game shop if they don't have comics whenever possible. And part of that encouragement, supporting them, especially in the last two years for a year and a half, two years is where it's been really hard for local stores. Is saying, okay, that's their advantage. That's their special thing that we are not going to try to match. Because we can always match having the product in stock because it's our warehouse.
Yeah.
But we can't um, we, we uh, give this to them as their, their unique advantage over us.
Yeah, it's, it's great. It's awesome that you guys do that for real because I love my local shop. I love that I could support them and you guys at the same time. So let's uh, why don't we go straight into the data pack, the actual meat and potatoes? And um, we'll talk a little bit, you know, about what's in there without giving too much away because we want you guys to be surprised too. But basically this data pack, it starts with telling you what a scream sheet is because we have scream sheets within it.
Now, it's important to note, um, the, the writers on this are, the primary writer on the scream sheets was a gentleman, a freelancer named Jay Parker, who we've worked with before. Uh, he is a great scenario writer. Um, and James uh, basically came in uh, and you know, Jay turned it in and then Ja- James just shuffled the papers so they're all straight. Uh, he did other things too, but.
For a couple of these, I, I wrote the um, the initial concept and then Jay just really took it away and made it awesome.
No, that's great.
So.
Hilaria, Digital Divas, Burn It Down, Don't Fear The Reaper, Cargo Race, Snuff, and Thrill Kill.
There are some, there are a lot in here, in here that uh, are also totally all Jay. So I won't take credit for those.
Yeah. And a scream sheet is a nickname for essentially a customizable newspaper. You can, more, most people in twenty-four-five view it on their agent.
Hmm.
Um, but you can also get printed out on Flimsy's, which is basically just kind of a cheap plastic-ish paper.
Yeah.
Um, so a scream sheet is like, the idea is like a broadsheet or a tabloid sheet. Uh, uh, they're called scream sheets because they stream the headlines at you. And uh, you can say, I want a scream sheet that is all articles about guns and you will get your own custom zine with nothing but gun articles. Uh, the Night City Today scream sheets are designed to be more like standard newspapers, uh, where they have a, a page of various articles. At least one of those articles will have something to do with the story, the adventure on the other side, the mission on the other side, but the rest are just in-world information. Um, news stories about neat things like um, uh, let me get my cursor on the right monitor. Uh, missing persons cases on the ride, militech exec sack for ethics. How far do you have to go in militech before they sack you for ethics violations? Yeah.
That sounds like someone had to take the fall, you know what I mean? For something that happened.
Let me uh, let me give some, some juicy specifics that aren't gonna spoil anything. Um, we've got a scream sheet in which the bozos are, are rolling up in three ice cream trucks. Uh, to cause great chaos. I'll, I'll let you guess which one of the adventures that is. Um, we've got another adventure uh, where there's a string of arson's. Um, arson's, is that the term?
Yeah, arson's. Yeah, it does sound like it's not the right one, right?
Right, doesn't it? Like it's robberies.
Arsonese, arses?
Um, arses. Um, there's a string of um, arson's following this uh, band. Um, called the Digital Divas, uh, that have got this new song called Burn It Down and uh, it's causing them all kinds of bad press.
I wonder what it's about.
You've gotta figure out what's going on.
Yeah, and as far as the way that this data pack is structured, is you'll have one page of what looks like a Night City Today News scream sheet. And there are tiny articles within them that all of these can just be their own plot hooks. These are just like tiny little plot hooks that are within this game, within the game's universe. And then the next page is an actual mini adventure that you can expand to be a full campaign if you wanted to, really. It's, it's the premise of an adventure is there. And it's broken down into two sections. One section is player information. So this is information you give to your players about the scenario. And then it's game master notes and this is the nitty gritty. This is what you will know that your players don't know. And the kind of information you get in here is like, use a compact ground car for this, use the road ganger stats for something else. Roll one D ten and then they have this kind of weapon or that kind of weapon. So it's all kinds of useful information. Does all the work for you and all you have to do is tell your buddies, shut up, sit down, we're playing cyberpunk. And you just get straight to it. So.
And uh, sorry guys, James.
It's not just scream sheets. Uh, there's also some twenty things lists by um.
Uh, Melissa, uh, the internet knows her better as Almond Breath, but her name is Melissa Wong.
Shut up.
Yep, sorry. So, so a while back.
I remember her as Cyanide Breathman, but uh.
Those of you in the community might remember. Yeah, I, 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 username Almond Breath posted a bunch of twenty things in Night City lists and we like them so much. Uh, we brought her on board for this and we got some of her twenty lists, twenty lists. And so there's twenty freelancers of Night City. Um, twenty hotspots in Night City, twenty people in the Night City subway, twenty safe houses in Night City. Twenty things in a subdermal pocket and twenty vendors at Mr. Carnigan's Midnight Market. Um, and these are great, not only because they are cool, random, or not so random things.
Yeah.
They can be random, but they don't have to be. Uh, but also because they provide really interesting new vore, new people, new places, new things you can find in Night City. Um, that you can expand on without giving, without detailing it too much. Because if you, if it's over detailed, the GM's stuck.
Yeah.
If it's detailed, just the right amount, the GM can take it and make it their own. Um, but also if you're a player, these are people that can be your friends, your mentors, your enemies. Places, you know, if you're the fixture and you roll for your office, the booth in the back of a, of a dive bar or something, you can pick one of these dive bar, one of these uh, hotspots in Night City to be your office. Uh, there is a, a lot of cool things that players can get out of these uh, these sheets, uh, these twenty things lists.
There's enough content for hours and hours of gameplay, especially with the twenty things. It makes each uh, scenario more unique. Because you're picking and choosing and adding NPCs, you're adding your own NPCs off of this list. And um, and you're making your own unique adventure with your friends.
Yeah. Uh, by the way, I'll say, if you're uh, if you're doing the scream sheets, uh, GMs and you look, you'll see that each of the articles is by a person and there is actually specific pattern. This is not like every time we put an article, we give them the reporter a new name. There are specific reporters who will pop up again and again and again and they have beats. They have things they cover that are unique to them. So they, it, it's a very subtle bit of characterization. My personal favorite is Angie Wu three point two. Angie Wu was a character in Live and Direct, the media supplement for uh, Cyberpunk twenty twenty. And uh, I look forward to revealing someday Angie, who exactly is Angie Wu three point two, just a rebuilt Angie Wu? Or a member of an Angie Wu poser gang? Or someone who took the name or AI based on Angie Wu? There's so many possibilities. Yep.
Yeah.
There's a cool thing in there where, where Angie Wu describes her day and she like, uh, where she wakes up and she describes the average day of the media. I like the character so much, we just had to put her in this. So there, I think she's in the core rulebook and a couple of scream sheets too.
Yeah, I've seen her name pop up. I didn't know if you guys just uh, made it up on the spot and now, now I'm gonna be paying attention to that kind of stuff.
Oh yeah, no, no, there's, there's some, there's world, whenever we have a chance, we world build.
Oh man, this is a long one. The Two Block Neighborhood Morals Association.
Yeah.
One of them. They wrote an article. That's cool.
Yeah, oh, that's the other thing is because um, there's no line. It's like, you know, nowadays you can get a newspaper and there can be an advertisement that's written like an article, news article. And technically by the law, they've got to put, this is sponsored content that we're on there. They don't have to put that in the world of red. So it's just the writer is, and if they're very clever, they'll put, you know, by this person who sounds like a real reporter. But so a lot of times they'll just be like, they're doing an advertisement, the advertisement is like an article and they'll just say by the organization that wrote it. Um, there's a thing from Biotechnica where it's an advertisement, but it's by Biotechnica.
I love that. I love that kind of stuff. Uh, so that's the data pack as far as scream sheets, scream sheet adventures, the twenty things. And after that, you guys get this new design of a character sheet. Uh, do you guys want to talk about the new character sheet? I'll have it up on the screen. People will see it, stuff.
Yep. So that, that took some work. Um, condensing the character sheet to two pages took some work. Uh, I will say, it still looks like the original character sheet in basic design. Uh, it is still landscape instead of portrait. Uh, because that just works best. Uh, we removed the full skill list. Um, the full skill list is very helpful in a game with a lot of skills because a lot of times you forget what all the skills are. But when you're trying to condense everything to a single page, uh, or a single page front and back, you can't have every skill in a sixty-something skill game. Especially if those skills have sub-skills like martial arts and performance.
Yeah.
So they got reduced and they now have a space for bonuses, uh, things like uh, the aforementioned uh, bonus techs get to repairing things or the bonus that nomads get to driving things. Uh, there's still weapons and armors page, cyberware is no longer, it's on page, but a single page with I think something like nine slots for cyberware. Because I don't think it's possible for a starting character to start with more than nine pieces of cyberware.
You're right. It's like four or five max.
Yeah.
That's what I usually see. I love that uh, most of the stuff that you'll need to reference is all in one page, the first page. Then the second page is life path, style and substance, enemies, and your gear and cash is, is on the next page.
Yep. So um, this, this character sheet is gonna shine digitally. Uh, as I mentioned before, in the digital version, it will have a uh, red. It's a standard red and white one. And we know some people, the red's very harsh on our eyes. So there's also gonna be a black where all the red is black. Um, and all the uh, black is uh, black or sometimes it's white. Uh, and more importantly, it's going to be form fillable and the skill section will be auto calculable, will auto calculate itself. So when you enter your, it will not automatically enter in, um, you can't, it will not automatically populate, say, into the stat blocks. But it will, once you enter in the stat value, the level value and the bonus value, calculate the total for you for the skill you put in there.
Yeah, that's awesome. I love that. I love the new design. It looks really good. I think it would be great on paper too, just pen and paper. Uh, especially with the bonus section, you can erase it, uh, you know, bring a pencil, obviously.
I mean, I like it after you, after you get a grasp of the general, the, the basic skills that you're gonna use all the time. And you sort of get a handle of what all those skills are. You don't need what is essentially a reminder of a skill you don't have on your character sheet.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, it's nice to be able to bring like a one page, boom, is my character.
Yeah, I like that.
I think it's cool from an efficiency standpoint.
Yeah. And there are 30 slots for skills on this character sheet.
Hmm.
And we did some testing on that. And I think it's, it comes down to, it fits, easily fits all the pre-gens in there.
Hmm.
Um, so the only way you can break it is if you're the kind of person that puts two in every skill.
Yeah.
Uh, and if you are, that's cool. That is a choice and a nice one. And I'm not going to gainsay you on it. Um, but I'm gonna say you will need a second sheet for that. But if you're just playing a more standard, I'm good. I, I've got all my basic skills to.
You specialize.
And then you specialize in your remaining skills. You're gonna have plenty of room in the skill section. Even for, with a few spaces left over to add chips. Or, um, just to note the skills that you use commonly that you have zero ranks, zero levels in.
Yeah, I love it. And then, um, now last but not least with this data pack, cause it's not over yet. Wait, there's more. The maps that we talked about. There are 12 beautiful maps, I believe from Loki battle maps.
Lock. I thought it was Loki first at first too, but nope. They told us, they told us they pronounce it lock.
Okay. Nice. Noted. Lock battle maps that do amazing battle maps. I have their.
We should spell it. L O K E. Just, just in case you wanted to Google it.
This is what they're, what I know them for is for the big book and the giant book of cyberpunk battle mats. This is how it looks. Their name, lock battle maps.
Yeah, the giant book.
I have the giant book. There's nowhere to put it.
This is my head.
Yeah.
This is about midway down on my sternum. And yes, so you can see how big this book is. As also be noted, these are official now cyberpunk red products.
Yeah, it's amazing.
You will see if you get them in the store, these, and now you'll have a little sticker that says officially cyberpunk red. But yeah, uh, they are now our official map maker.
It's awesome. They do beautiful maps and you guys will see it in the data pack. Here's like a quick preview of stuff. It's gridded. It's beautiful. It's perfectly cyberpunk.
Yep. So there are, yeah, there are maps. I should also note that there are some maps in here that are done by Monster Fight Club.
Oh yeah, that's right.
Um, most of the maps are by Locke, but there are, uh, two, four maps. Cause there's, they're, they're broken up into two pages each, uh, maps by Monster Fight Club, which, uh, were made for their upcoming, uh, combat zone miniature skirmish game.
Oh, is that right? I didn't know that. Ooh, that's interesting.
We, we got those maps advanced. Uh, they're the desert map and, uh, the combat zone street map, or no, sorry, the, the more regular street map, the combat zone, the big combat zone map is, uh, is I believe a lock map.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, they're, they're, they're beautiful maps. It's great that you can have them in person too, when you guys print it. That's really fun with your buddies and then getting the bits and mortar program. To get the digital version, you guys will be getting the digital maps as well. Like I said, win, win, win.
Yep. The digital will come with both a PDF of the maps and JPEGs of the maps.
There you go.
So that you can pull them into a VTT easily enough.
Uh, my question for you is, uh, do these maps coincide or go together with any of the scream sheet adventures?
It is, it's, it's, it's a complex question. Yes and no. For example, there's a parking garage. Yeah, there's a parking garage and, uh, in the maps and there is a parking lot in one of the scream sheet adventures and they're very easy to use one-on-one. Uh, not everything in scream sheets has a corresponding map. Uh, the biggest yes is that there is one that takes place in the Badlands with a, uh, specific vehicle. And there is a map that is the Badlands and that vehicle is silhouetted on the map.
I see it.
Um, but other than that, now we didn't want to get so specific that they'd be useless anywhere else.
Yeah, it's, it's, you guys cover, you guys do cover a full gambit of like cyberpunk settings. It's like the out, the bad land, the city, the combat zone. Uh, you get all those vibes, rooftop vibe, parking lot vibe. There's all kinds of stuff you can do with these maps.
Yep. That was basic idea. And like, if you like these maps, if you get the data pack, you love these maps. Pick up that big book or the giant book. I prefer the giant book because it's huge.
It's great. When you open it, uh, side by side like that, you know, like it's, it's great. It, it, the, the ring down the middle, it's, it's, they took into account for that thing.
Yep. Yep. Um, and it's, uh, one in squares in both books, uh, very easy to use with pretty much every standard miniature.
Yeah.
And same with these maps.
It does, um, bring something unique to table. If you're, if you're still like, uh, I have a big folding chess X mat person. If you upgraded the giant book, you put it on the table, boom. It's saves a bunch of time, makes the game a lot.
Yeah, and this is a plastic, uh, kind of like a plasticky thing. So you could definitely do the dry erase, uh, thing where you like erase it and stuff like that. It's a great product.
And they do, uh, they do digital maps too on, uh, drive through that you can get and sing each, each one's a single map as opposed to a large book, but you can get, they have them all collected into a single cyberpunk folder that you can, uh, category that you can access.
Yeah, they're legit. I like them a lot. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you guys so much for doing this because this was one of the, just as a content creator, one of the things that people would ask me a lot. Is are there any pre-made adventures? Is there anything out there? That I can run with my friends? And there's Red Chrome Cargo that we have. It's really great one. There's the apartment from the Jump Start Kit, which by the way, there's a new DLC where you can convert the Jump Start Kit to Cyberpunk Red using the pre-gens and the, the apartment and venture within it. But we were hungry for more. We wanted, we wanted this exactly. So I really appreciate that you guys did this for us next, after everything.
Yeah. It, it, it's pretty exciting though. Um, and, uh, yeah, with, um, with the apartment, uh, with the Jump Start Kit conversion guide that you just mentioned, which James slaved over. James, I was like, I was like, James, we need to do a new DLC. He said, sure. What do we do? And I said, well, what if we give them the rules for converting the apartment and the three scream sheets for the Jump Start Kit to core, core red rules? And he said, sure, I could do that. The other says, Jay, I wanted to give them, I wanted to give them more. It felt like it was one page and boring. So I, I sent out every NPC, every named NPC from those four adventures. I'm like, that's cool.
You're forgetting the timeline is me saying that on a Wednesday and the following week on a Wednesday saying, I finished it. This is the first draft.
There you go. Yeah, no, it's great. Um, and so you get, you get with the Jump Start Kit conversion guide, you not only get the, the guidelines to convert the apartment, which remains one of the best classic cyberpunk adventures of all time.
It's great.
But the three screen sheets in there are all good. Um, great screen sheets. Um, to it. And you get something like 11 stat blocks. Every one of them has a role and a roll ability. So they're all really cool characters. If you want to use them as is, if you want to use them with different names, if you want to use them as a guy for what a fixer or a thing says, and special shout out to Rex. Because if you need that really high powered, an example of a high powered fixer for when your fixer in your party says, well, we're going to negotiate this job now. You use him, Rex is a, what a rank eight fixer.
Yep, something like that.
Has right gate operator that he is the kind of guy that you, you, uh, you roll against. So we know people have been asking, what about non-combat characters? There you go for Rex. So Rex is actually really a badass of combat.
Yeah, for sure. He's got the Kandachi mono three.
Knows how to use it. Um, so, um, so between the, with the conversion, with the conversion guide, you've got four adventures there. You've got three adventures in the core rulebook. You've got red chrome cargo and you'll have these six. So that's like six, 10, 13, 14, 14 adventures. Uh, between all these, once you have the data pack that you can run.
And, uh, and a bunch of plot hooks in the like fluffy scream sheet ones that we were talking about too.
Oh yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Twenty, twenty things, the 20 things in this data pack that, don't sleep on those. Those are, uh, yeah. Those are like.
Data pack is exactly what this should have been, is, was called because that's exactly what it is. It's all kinds of data that you can inject into your game throughout the entire pack. That will, if you, if you know, if you have rider's block, you just can't figure out how to get an adventure together. You just roll some dice, pick something and boom. You guys got something to go.
There is, you get, you get a bar, you get a bar and then, uh, you get the people and like, the great thing is, is, um, there's new gangs in here.
Hmm.
That you can pull out. Uh, I think the princesses are like one of my favorite ones, which is a princess poser gang of all, like, not like Disney princesses. They're all like She-Ra princesses of power, princesses.
Gotcha. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I like that. Then.
It fulfills, it fulfills a similar role as some sections in the extremely good 2020 book, um, Night City.
Yeah.
Yes.
The Night City book. Um, where, oh, I need to figure out something, uh, they need to go somewhere. It's 15 minutes before a session. Grab the data pack. Boom, boom, boom. Let's go.
Yep.
And then you get the map and you put them on the map. Boom.
Yeah.
Everything.
That's it. It's great. I love it. I can't wait to really dive into it and make content about it and everything and get it in my hands too. That'll be a really fun thing.
I, I too am excited about getting it in my hands. These days, whenever I get a product, I'm excited about getting it. Just COVID, man.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
But we survived it and we're stronger. So what does that say about us?
So far.
We're, we're not, hey man, we're not going to get kicked down. All right. Don't say that. Do not manifest that negativity. All right. Guys, thank you so much. I seriously appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming on. Thank you for being a part of the community, the way that you guys are. And thank you for making awesome games.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Any closing thoughts about the data pack or DLCs or anything you guys want to mention, social media, any of that stuff?
Oh, we got, we got more DLCs coming out. So keep, uh, keep a weather eye.
If you like elf lines, pay attention.
Tell them, don't tell them.
And I could tell what's going to be in it. I'm just saying.
You already posted on the Reddit about it.
Yeah. I am excited. All I can say is that we're waiting for one very, very special piece of art.
Very special. Very special piece of art.
That's amazing.
Yes. It is going to be amazing. Um, so yeah, uh, real quick. If you want cyberpunk red dice, talk to Key Workshop. If you want maps, talk to Locke. If you want sound sex, go to sound sets. Go to Cyerscape Sound Sex is something completely different. They don't offer that officially with a license fee. Um, and if you want to listen to. You know what? COVID, man. Uh, if you want, if you want, if you want, um, a really cool, uh, one of the best GM guidebooks, advice books ever, especially for cyberpunk. Uh, uh, gentleman named Colby Elliott, uh, who is a fantastic reader and who John John has had on his page. He'll click, insert a link here. Uh, uh, read, listen up, you printed a screwhead as an audiobook, which you can find on Audible and iTunes, uh, audiobooks. Uh, and it is absolutely still one of the best books ever. Uh, for advice on how to run a near future modern urban game.
Yeah.
Uh, it'll take you through what is helping, not only help you of like little things like, what if our guys are all combat monsters, but I, what is cyberpunk? How do I theme cyberpunk? Uh, what are the tensions that exist in the cyberpunk setting? What are the things I can pull on?
Getting that feel and the vibe correct.
Yeah, totally. It helps you wrap your mind around all the concepts of cyberpunk that make it really fun and engaging for players and for game masters.
Yeah.
It's, it's one of those things. It's just like staple.
Yes.
Before I write about cyberpunk from as my job, I read that book.
Oh yeah.
And it's an audiobook. You listen to it in the car on the way to the grocery store. You don't even have to worry, you know, you, you, if you listen to your workout because you know, we all know, we all work out.
Yeah.
Um, regularly and religiously.
It's a big part of our industry, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's why you're getting me from the shoulders.
Yeah. It's too much from the, the, it's, they can't handle it. Too hot for you.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, but no, seriously, uh, the audiobook is fantastic. I highly recommend it. And like I said, uh, and miniatures, if you want miniatures, um, go over to Monster Fight Club. They just teased a new bozo miniature. Uh, which is going to be really cool. And I think they just released some new cool, cool stuff. And John John, your painting is really coming along.
Put that closer. I gotta see John John's painting.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
It is great. Yeah. Do the, do the thing where you hold your finger. There you go. So the camera focuses on it, right?
Ah, the makeup YouTuber.
Yes. No, your, your painting is really coming along.
Uh, thank you so much. I've been having a lot of fun. Here's the, uh, here's their gang leader. Oh, I gotta do the, the sergeant here. Gotta show off the sergeant. Now you got me showing him off.
Oh no, show him, show him.
Look at that. It's really blurry, but it's.
James, James, what kind of helmet is that hat?
Uh, it depends. It, it could be several of them. I can't tell the lining from here. It's, it's like this small. It's a hat. It needs to be at least three times as big.
There's the, the.
Oh, that's great.
That is cool.
Yeah. Stay tuned for some combat zone videos, guys. If you guys are watching and part of this channel, make sure you subscribe because I'll be having some in-game live at my FLGS combat zone games. I can't wait for that.
That is awesome.
Yeah.
Fun.
All right, guys. Well, thank you so much. Thanks for letting me show off my minis. I really appreciate anytime I can. Thanks for coming on the show. Uh, Night City Council is in session. Make sure you guys, sorry, make sure you guys send your questions to me, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. Or any way you can reach me on social media. I don't care. As long as you reach me, the questions will make the list. I appreciate everybody in the community. Thank you to all my patrons. Thank you to all the fans of Artel Sorian Games and for supporting them. For James, Jay and Telsorian Games and I, we say goodbye and thank you. See you guys on the next one.